Don't count that, it's night. And so you can go to your bottom. If I can come in, this is like. Fancy. She also, if you go volunteer, you get to go. And so people who are just. Did a T-shirt contest. Did a T-shirt contest. Like a night where you get to choose. It's like photos. It's true. And then, of course, we learned, because it's like family is getting people, and I felt kind of bad for the other person. I was like, we kind of enjoyed it a little bit, but. I always wanted to do that. I've done, like, I've done story time. And so. And a couple of times. You know, I never heard me having. How to do that? It's right here, but it's not, right? Should be in there. You have a little tip. It's down at the top. Wait, let's put us someone out.
That's why you can't move on up.
Dale, how are you?
What are we doing? And what does that mean? Do I have to wear it? He's like, it doesn't matter.
Good evening. We'd like to welcome you all here to City Council this evening. First of all, you can see that Mayor Mendenhall is away tonight. He's on family vacation, so we'd like to excuse him. And we are going to start off with a prayer and then the pledge. Jessie, you're doing the prayer right?
Exactly.
And then Councilman Took will be offering the Pledge of Allegiance.
And I have asked Angela Eckhart to say our prayer this more, or evening.
Very grateful for the chance we have to meet together this evening. We are grateful for this wonderful city and for all of the opportunities it brings to us and for the people that live there and for all of the acts of kindness and the things that they do. Father, we ask thee to bless our leaders, the leaders of our nation, the leaders of our state, and especially the leaders of our city, that they might be guided and protected and strengthened as they are making decisions that will help us and strengthen our community. Please bless us that we will continue to help and love one another and to remember, remember what Spanish Fork City stands for and the way that we help and love our neighbors and we band together. Please be with all of the people that live in Spanish Fork and the surrounding communities, that they might have peace and that they might have safety. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
He told me I can give an inspirational thought.
Oh, please.
And I don't know if I have an inspirational thought, but I was thinking, I was here last year this week to wearing my Spanish Fork Youth Arts Festival shirt. And it's Youth Arts Festival again, this, this year we're at Maple Mountain because Spanish Fork is in the middle of a big change, as you well know. So we're at Maple Mountain and we invite you to come up and visit if you would like to tomorrow. I know in my class, we're making llama llama pancakes and reading a llama llama book. If you want to come, there's lots of other fun things. We have fifteen hundred children there and the whole school is just abuzz with excitement and with life. So if you would like to come and visit the Youth Arts Festival, we would love for you to do that. I didn't wear my Youth Arts Festival shirt because I asked, I asked Jessie, what do I have to wear? And he's like, whatever you want. So I wore my Firefly shirt because tonight my kindergarteners get to go down to Thompson Historic Farm and take a tour and see the Fireflies because we won the Firefly T-shirt contest. So we get to go see the Fireflies tonight. And when I'm standing in the middle, I've seen them in several states. And when I'm standing in the middle of that and see all those little sparks of light, it just is such a good reminder that we need to make sure we pay attention to the little things in life. Especially, I think, as grownups, we get so caught up in all the things that have to be done that we miss the little things. And Spanish Fork has Fireflies and they're magical, but it also has a lot of other places where magic happens, at the ballpark and at schools and all over in the community. So I just would encourage you tonight and for maybe this summer to make it your job to look for the little things and to see if you can find the magic around you. Thanks.
Thanks, Angela. Angela.
Please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start off with a recognition. The new hospital, who's going to do that? Or are.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem. Am I the one that's doing this recognition? Megan, I gotta bring you up and introduce you. I don't have anything like all written out, so Megan Johnson, please come up to the podium. Yes, we adore working with our local hospital here in Spanish Fork. And so Megan, tell us what's, what's new in your life and new at the hospital and your new role there and, and what you're offering the residents of Spanish Fork right now.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so Council and, and Spanish Fork City, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here tonight. Um, I'm Megan Johnson. I'm the, the president of Intermountain Spanish Fork Hospital. And I brought with me Caesar Garcia, who is our chief nursing officer. And twenty twenty-four brought both of us into new roles into the hospital. And although we've both been here since the very beginning, the very start of the hospital, helping to develop and, and build it and see its walls come up, um, these new roles and in these positions are very exciting. And so, um, I've, just a little bit of information about me, um, I've been with Intermountain for twenty-two years. I've worked, um, at other facilities and, um, have really grown in my career through Intermountain. Um, I am a nurse by, by background and, um, spent a lot of years in the emergency department. But building this hospital and, um, and seeing its fruition, living in Spanish Fork, um, has been probably one of the greatest moments of my career. And I can tell you, having worked at other facilities, supporting the, the, the people in this community, um, in the community that I live in, um, it's, it's a goal. It's a, um, it's a, it's a personal endeavor and, and just such a pride and joy. Um, you know, we spend a lot of time in this community with my husband. We've lived here for fourteen years and two boys. We spend a lot of time out in this community. And so the, the, the work that I can do and the support that I can give, not just Spanish Fork, but you know, Springville, Mapleton, Pace, and Santa Juan, Salem, um, is really what brings me so much joy. And, um, you know, I'm gonna give Caesar just a little bit of inform, uh, a little bit of time to, to talk about himself and his journey and, and then just a quick update on some of the things that you can expect from the hospital. Thank you.
So Caesar Garcia, and I grew up here in Utah County. I grew up in Provo, went to Provo High. Uh, met my wife down at SUU. This is my wife Sarah and my, two of my four children, two of my other kids are sick. This is Maya and Thomas. Um, but, uh, met my wife at Cedar City, so I'm a nurse, chief, chief nursing officer. And, uh, my journey was a little different than Megan. She's been at Intermountain for the, her entire career. Um, mine started at Utah Valley as a, as a medical surgical nurse and then ICU nurse. And then I wanted to get into leadership. Um, Intermountain is a big place, a lot of great people at Intermountain. And, uh, our journey took us out to Vernal, so small community hospital where I worked at, I had an opportunity to be a director of nursing out there. But, uh, we always wanted to come home. And, uh, I actually remember my brother-in-law living here just in these townhomes behind Walmart. And there was a sign that came up that said, Spanish Fork Hospital. You know, this was seven, eight years ago. And it was like, man, we wanna, that'd be cool if we can end up back, you know, back home. Uh, and as, as the stars aligned, you know, Megan and Francis and as they built their team, they took a chance on me. I was the one leader that was not in Intermountain that got hired. And, uh, I've had the opportunity to be the med surge and opened ICU recently in, in February. And now as Megan stepped into her role as, as the hospital president, it's given me the opportunity to now learn her role as, you know, as the chief nursing officer and, uh, love working with Megan. You can just see the passion in her. This is her all the time, just loves this community and she's always telling people how great Spanish Fork is and our hospital. And it just, it's awesome because then it radiates to the rest of us. So, um, you know, we, we spend a lot of time together and, you know, it's been great to see the hospital grow and I'm just excited to be a part of it in this community. Um, we live in Springville. Like you said, it's, this, this is the community's hospital and it's just gonna continue to grow and grow. And I'm here for the long run to see that happen.
Yeah, so I, I would just say our, our biggest challenge is growing with the community that's growing around us and really understanding, um, what gaps and barriers that we have in this community and how we, when it relates to health and, and healthcare and access to healthcare and, and really how we close those gaps to assure that our community has access to everything that it needs. Um, you know, since opening, only been open three years, we're already, we will start expanding our emergency department, um, built, uh, too small already. And so we are excited to be adding that project in. We'll start the planning phase, uh, in quarter three and, and really start the, the development and the construction of that in quarter one of next year. Um, like Caesar said, we added on ICU, we've added on a lot of services, um, a surgical robot, a, um, orthopedic surgical robot as well, which is very exciting for the community and really what that offers. Um, and then just looking to expand our OR and our, our women's center and being able to really care for our community and our patients closer to home, knowing that, you know, we have Utah Valley, which is, which is a phenomenal hospital, eleven miles up the road. But how do we keep the community here and, and close to home? And so a lot of exciting things, um, you know, we're, we're out in the community. We're trying to create those relationships, not just to hear the stories of what goes well, um, but really the stories where we didn't quite meet expectations. And that really is where we continue to grow and to learn and to be able to provide the services to the community. So, you know, we, we have loved the, the, um, the community's support, the open arms, the ability to have difficult conversations, um, and, and just hope to continue that partnership in everything that we do. We are the community's hospital and, and that is really what we strive to continue to do. So thank you for this. Thank you for allowing us to be here and, um, allowing me to, to be a part of everything that you guys do and, and, uh, love when you guys think of me to, to help out in the community. And, um, we're just, if there's any questions, you know, that we can answer for you guys, just let us know.
Mayor Protem, if I may ask, Megan, Caesar, for people that don't know what you do, like what, what is your two positions? I, I know what a nurse does, I know what a doctor does, but these two positions maybe people don't think about in how a hospital operates. What, what is, uh, maybe a, a day in the life of each of your jobs?
A lot of meetings.
Aren't they the best?
So, uh, you know, nurse by trade, I, I like to be out frontline. I like to be helping. I will help out any chance that I can get, um, with frontline. Um, but you know, really for me, day-to-day is the operations of the hospital. It's looking at, um, you know, what services that we need to add, what, are we staffed? Um, what is our budget? Um, what is the community? You know, a lot of involvement in the community that we do. Summertime is really where we ramp up a lot of the activities that we do. Um, collaborating with not just Spanish Fork and, and South County, but the entire, um, Utah County community and, and the services that we provide, any gaps and barriers. Um, and then just really working with Intermountain and the state of Utah as a whole to make sure that we are helping people live the healthiest lives possible.
So I'm still trying to figure that out, to be honest. I do sit in a lot of meetings. Um, honestly, from, from a nursing side, it's, it's a lot of process improvement. Are we following the best practice, evidence-based practice? And, and really making sure that our, our caregivers have the resources and the education that they need to make sure that they're doing the right thing. Um, we can always improve. Uh, we do wanna keep the costs low. We wanna be efficient. And so a lot of what we do is to oversee all that, to make sure that we are meeting all our metrics financially, um, quality, safety. So it's, it's so that when you come or a, my family member comes to the hospital, we wanna make sure that you guys all feel like you are getting the best care. Um, you know, we want feedback. We get surveys, um, and we really, that's what we do. We're there to support our frontline, to make sure that they have what they have, what they need to make sure that they're doing the best job that they can.
Thank you. It's a blessing to have you in our community. And since you opened your doors, was it fall?
Three years.
Fall twenty?
Three years in April, so.
And the amount of growth, I don't think you or any of us could have imagined at the time how quickly you would have grown and because there's a need. And you're busy and growing and so is Spanish Fork. So thank you for being so involved and caring so much to be a participant, actively participating in our community, so people can know how great you are and that you, that you're here to help.
It really, it really is a collaboration, you know, as, as you grow and helping us to understand where we need to grow and, you know, the collaboration with our EMS, with our fire, um, with our police departments. Uh, we're growing together and it is pride and progress. And I feel like we have taken on that same motto of, of Spanish Fork Hospital, pride and progress.
Well, best of luck to both of you in your new roles.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Mayor, maybe while they're still here, since the hospital opened up three years ago, they've just jumped in and been, becoming a community partner. And I, I noticed Dale at the Community Health Fair a couple of weeks ago, there was a very large presence, uh, doing some bike stuff, among other things, right out in the parking lot and, and in their tents. Just a great community partner. And I think we all hoped when the idea of the hospital was first dreamt in twenty thirteen, twenty twelve, and then when it became a little bit more of a reality, when Caesar saw the sign of, hey, it's coming sooner or later when COVID lets it, right? We hoped that, that partnership would be exactly what it is. And candidly, I think it's better. They've been, Megan, before you, Caesar, and her role and, and others have been really helpful in, in us evolving, uh, our fire and EMS service, mostly our EMS service, um, and the role that they've played there. We've done really great trainings with them on the police side and, uh, fire and emergency management too. And it's been great. And, uh, we're excited for you, Megan, and that opportunity that you have. Of course, she's Spanish Fork talent. We think she's great. And Caesar, it's great to get to know you.
Can I add something from Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Um, and I just need to let you know, Megan doesn't only walk the, talk the talk, but she walks the walk. Uh, she's already involved in two committees that I'm over in the community and is willing to volunteer her time, as busy as she is. Uh, she's willing to volunteer and get involved in the community. She's passionate about health and wellness, uh, which is a natural fit for us. So I want you to know she, she actively participates in what she's telling you. So we appreciate her and her family who's willing to give her up.
Thanks, Dale. Well, it's a night of recognition. And one thing we love to do here in our council meetings, probably one of our favorite things, is to recognize our youth. So I would like to invite Dave Boyack up, the athletic director from Maple Mountain High School. You have two groups you're going to introduce tonight, right? The five A state championship volleyball and track. So come on up to the podium. Tell us a little bit about these group or invite their coaches up, whatever works best for you.
So our, uh, baseball team also won the state title, but they're gonna do theirs on the eighteenth, I think, with the Spanish Fork volleyball team, or excuse me, softball team.
Oh, cool. Okay.
Yes, we're doing boys track, boys, uh, volleyball.
Okay, before I get into that, can I just give a shout out to your hospital? Uh, eight weeks ago, that robot you mentioned, the Mako orthopedic robot, put a titanium knee right here. And, uh, it's been, it's been.
Eight weeks ago?
Eight weeks ago.
Dave, I think you should strut right across. How are you doing?
Oh, my gosh.
Woo, good job.
It was a pretty extensive surgery, as you well know. And, uh, the rehab was kinda tough, but Dr. Gillette and your staff were there, was just amazing. And I was so well taken care of.
Good.
Such a good hospital and such amazing people there. So shout out to you and your, and your organization. So thank you for that. Uh, we, we won three of these titles in the fall, uh, girls volleyball, cross country, and then girl soccer. We had a good crowd of kids here. I don't know if you remember.
Yes.
And I was worried about tonight because it's summer and a lot of these kids are gone. And so we don't, we don't have a big group tonight, but we do have about, uh, I think about seventy-five kids on the boys', uh, track team and around thirty, is that correct? Uh, boys on the boys volleyball team. But we, we just don't have a big group tonight, so we apologize for that. But I do wanna mention just real quickly, a big shout out to the emergency services people and the fire truck people. That is such a cool thing for us to be able to do that. When that thing pulls in, when those things, those vehicles pull into the high school, you couldn't wipe the grin off those kids' face if you had to. Uh, one of our coaches said, hey, we just ought to get our own fire truck. Had a pretty good year. So I don't think that'll happen. But, uh, so thank you for providing that service. Uh, it's been so fun for these kids to participate in that. Anyway, so I'm just gonna introduce some coaches that are here and just have them come up and talk about their season real quick, so I'm not taking up any time. Let's do, uh, let's do track and field first. So Coach Lake, Coach Jeff Lake, and by the way, he's replacing me as the athletic director. I'm retiring.
You're done, done?
Finally, yeah. And I have a lot of my former students sitting up here instead, which is cool for me to see y'all here. Uh, Chief, he, he said he finally ran the mile just the other day. For his, for his test. And he ran it for me in, in my PE classes. He did really well.
Probably only because he was in trouble, right? Like, get a lap, Johnson.
The girls ran at the same time. He was chasing some girls, I think, is what he was doing.
For sure.
So anyway, thank you to all of you. And then, uh, Coach Lake, our, uh, my replacement is the AD and then our boys track coach. Uh, and then Coach Andrus, where you at? Is there any other track coaches here, you two? Okay, let's have these two come up and just give a little quick recap on, on what they did this year in track. And you better, you better mention Banks. He's sitting there in the back. This kid sitting in the back is a part of three state records, uh, in the sprints and relays. So, you know, it's pretty cool to have him.
That is cool.
On our track team along with the rest of the kids. So Coach Lake and Coach Andrus, one up.
I guess I gotta have to talk. Coach Andrus didn't want to. The boys did well this year. I think it kind of started back with cross country. Um, I think I mentioned this with the newspapers when they talked to me about the state championship, the boys cross country team winning the state championship. Um, and the fall kind of led into, um, this season. I think the boys saw an opportunity that there's, there's a good chance that they could, um, take the state championship. Certain things fell into place at the, at the state meet that, uh, allowed us to, uh, to do that. Um, some unfortunate things happened, uh, but I think the boys responded really well this year. And like, um, Dave mentioned, um, we had a lot of state records, um, individual state championships. Um, Banks Jackson is one that he mentioned. He has the, uh, five ice, five A state record and the overall state record in the four hundred.
It was the eighth fastest time in the country, forty-six oh five for a four.
So, um, and, yeah, he won two individual state championships. He was part of the four by two team that won state championship. Uh, they also set the state record in the five A, in that event as well. But there's, there's, there's Banks, yeah, he's in the back.
Well, we invite them all up.
Yeah. Are we ready for him to come up?
Yeah.
We'd like to invite the whole team up.
The rest of you guys could come up too. Um, part of the cross country state track teams.
Come on, guys, you're faster than that.
This is what's left over the summer, sorry. These are some of the boys that, uh, were part of the state championship team, both in cross country and track.
Well, congratulations, guys. Thank you so much for being here. And we would love you to just come around, shake our hand. And then Nick or Pete, we have Pete here tonight. We wanna get a picture. So come through, shake our hand, and then stand right here and Pete will take our photo. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Well done, you guys.
Congratulations.
Coach. Good job, Coach.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
He's tall. No, you're good.
You're good. Please stand in front of us. There we go. I got you now. Here we go. Awesome.
Thanks, guys.
So Coach, before you get to volleyball, what is the, how many state championships in this, this school year did you all win?
Six.
Six.
Yeah. That's rare. I don't think that'll happen again.
That's a good note to go out on.
One's nice, but, uh, yeah, we had a great year, a really good year. I wanted also really to give a real, a good shout out to Tyler and, and Nick. Uh, if, if I felt like we were getting close to winning a state title, I needed to give them some, some forewarning. And amazingly, they always answered their phone. Unlike my wife, these guys always answer their phone and they're ready to go. It's amazing, the organization that, that these guys, uh, give to us to provide that experience. So just big shout out to you guys. Thank you so much. Okay, so we got, uh, I think we got about four volleyball coaches here. We got Joe Hillman, Joe, uh, Jessica Garcia, where you, where you at, Jessica? Uh, Coach Simons, Greg, and Coach Napoleon Galang. Our head coach is out of the country. And then another coach had family in town, so we have six volleyball coaches. So boys volleyball, uh, was sanctioned this year for the first time in the state of Utah. And, uh, we kinda thought we had a, a pretty good team, but boy, they really came on. And, uh, one of the kids is already committed to BYU to play volleyball, but he's only a junior. Uh, he, he's not here, is he? Uh, no, Trey's not here. So, uh, anyway, so yeah, coaches, come on up. We'll have you say a little bit about your kids and then we'll have the team come up.
I'm taller. My, yep. Uh, my name's Napoleon Galang. Um, I'm one of the varsity assistant coaches.
Joseph Hillman, I'm one of the volunteer varsity coaches, assistant.
I'm Greg Simmons. I'm JV assistant.
I'm Jessica Garcia, JV.
Um, like Dave said, Jeff writes our head coach. He's, um, out of the country, so we're kinda representing him. So I just wanted to give kind of a recap. Uh, like what was mentioned, it's the first year that it's an official sport in Utah. Boys volleyball has kinda been stewing in Utah. I, I'm sure you guys have been to at least one BYU men's game and, or women's game and have seen how exciting it is. And so to be officially sanctioned in Utah for the boys' side is awesome. Um, so it's been in club, it's been in a club form this pa, the past few years. And so, um, just a recap of the season, we went eleven and one in the region, so going against Spanish Fork and Timview and Springville, some of our rivals. Um, in the regular season, we went twenty-five and two. So, you know, it's a pretty good record for the first year. Um, and then capping it off in the state tournament, we got to play four more games in the state tournament, um, and ended up finishing twenty-nine and two for the season. We started open gyms, knowing that it was going to be a sport, um, in June, last, last June, a year ago. And, you know, we didn't know what to expect of it. We had guys come out here and there. And so going to, into the season, we're like, sure, you know, it's gonna be, it'll just be a fun first year, uh, for, for the sport. Um, so we had no idea how we were going to finish. And to just explain a little bit more about how we finished, um, I mean, just finished dominantly. I, if you know anything about volleyball, it's played, um, out of five. And so you end up playing a minimum of, of, of three games each match. And in the state tournament at UVU, we played four matches in total and we didn't drop a single set. And so we went three oh and swept every team at state, which is just, I mean, uh, the coaches were speechless too. The way they stepped up and just worked together, um, was awesome. Um, and just to give some background on some of the kids too, um, you know, the record speaks for itself. We had an awesome year, but we didn't have, uh, we didn't have our year without some of our ups and downs. We, we had a kid, our starting setter, um, who almost died earlier that year from, uh, a disease and he was out for most of the year. Um, and he could barely walk at the beginning of the season. He didn't really play with us. And whenever he'd fall, it would, he's six-six and it was just scary whenever he would fall. Uh, we had a kid that never played volleyball until he tried out. Uh, and we had several people just fill in spots because, um, other students just decided not to play and we just had to fill in spots where we could. And so finishing off in the year, we actually finished, uh, number one in the state over six A teams as well. So some of those, those bigger schools like Lehigh, Copper Hills, Pleasant Grove, uh, they ranked us above them. We finished number one in the state, um, and actually finished number fifty-two in the nation out of four thousand something schools. I kinda, we kinda stopped after like the twentieth page scrolling. So for a first-year program, finishing number one in the state, fifty-two in the nation. So for a first year program, finishing number one in the state, fifty-two in the nation. Um, I think what really drove us is that at the beginning, we kind of had a motto of family. Um, and it stood about, forget about me, I love you. And so we went in thinking, you know, it's going to be great to win, but the whole point of this is to be better, better young men. And that's what the coaches instilled in these young men. Um, and so I think winning was just the cherry on the top, but, um, that's what really kind of drove us and, and glued us together and had kind of a dominant performance is that they, they worked together, they became better people and obviously better volleyball players. So Joe was the other coach. I'll let him have some words.
I wasn't expecting to be here tonight, so I'm glad I could make it. So thank you for this. First thing, the fire truck ride was the most amazing thing. I never thought I'd ever do something like that. And so that was a bucket list and it's gone now, so thank you. One of the other things that I'd like to point out is this is the first year of, uh, boys volleyball. I played for BYU, um, back in their championship year, their last one that they had in two thousand and four. And the team camaraderie that we had was, it was, we would fight and argue, we're, we're young men and, um, but the team that we were able to coach and the goals that we had about making them better people and better, better young men, uh, it just flourished. Um, and the last thing I want to say is there will never be another first time state championship in boys volleyball. So it's pretty cool that no matter what, next year, the year after, year after, there'll be the second, third, whatever. But there'll always be Maple Mountain, uh, taking that championship. So I thought that was pretty exciting, so. And then also kudos to Spanish Fork High School taking third. I think if they would have been on the other side of the bracket, we probably would have seen them in the final. They were a great team, so it was, it was great to see Spanish Fork dominate the state of Utah, so, yeah.
And I told, uh, one of our players that he would speak, um, so I'm going to invite him to say something really quick.
Please.
I told him he might be free, but.
When did you tell him?
When did I tell him? I was like, hey, you're going to say something, okay? He was like, okay.
So I feel like one of our best players, and I don't mean to like, like one player is better than the other, but our most like, I don't know how to explain it, but his name is Trey Thornton. And I don't like, he was an amazing player and I feel like he brought the team together. And he was one of our captains and he was really useful for our team. Like, I feel like without him, a lot of this wouldn't have happened. Like, we, we could have done like a lot of it, but I feel like a lot of it wouldn't have happened without him. Cause he's just an amazing player. He's, he's committed to BYU, like you heard, but he's just really amazing. And Mac, Mac Hillman, he's our other captain. He's a senior, he graduated. I'm really going to miss him because he really brought the team together when we were down, like, when we were all down, he would tell us to smile and he would bring our team back up. And I really appreciated that from him. And I just, I love our team. It's awesome.
That is so great. It sounds like not only do you have awesome coaches, but incredible teammates.
Yeah, um, I feel like, so our head coach, his name is Jeff Wright, but I feel like he was our coach for like mental reasons. Like, like volleyball is a very mental game, but like he was there for that. And then, um, these two, they were there for like the, the main, not like, but they were just there for like the technical part. Like the, the diff, not the difficult stuff, but like, just like, I don't know how to explain it.
No, we got you, yeah.
But yeah, it was, it was a really fun year. I, I, this is probably going to be like the most memorable year of my life.
That's very exciting. And you're right, there will never be a state championship again.
First time.
First time around. So congratulations to all of you.
What's your name again?
Manase, Story. Thank you.
May I ask, would, would you okay if I ask you a question? I mean, you're up here, you might as well be taken advantage of, right? We'll ask you some questions. Speaking from the athlete's point of view, your coach just mentioned that this was kind of a bucket list thing to be able to ride on that fire truck. We think it's really cool. We think it's a special part of our community to be able to do this. Maybe share with the council what it meant for you as an athlete to have that opportunity to, as, you know, whether it was the, the track team, you, baseball, softball from Spanish Fork, right? What, what was that like for you to win that state championship and then have that fire truck ride?
It was like, it was like a dream. Like, we were, we were on that fire truck, we were all, we were all cheering, we were going through the neighborhoods, we're number one. And like, we were, we were all just having fun and it was just a fun, like, get together chill time. We were all, we were all super happy, we were talking to each other. It was just, it was just such a blast for us. It was really fun. Oh, yeah. But, um, so the fire trucks are really loud, so obviously people were coming out wondering what it was. We were just, we were all like yelling, we're number one, we're number, best in the state. And they're, they're probably waving at us like, yeah, best in the state. But, um, yeah, it was really fun. We saw them come out and it was just, it was just such a blast. And we almost got hit by a few power lines, but it's, it's fine. It was, it was really fun.
Hey, Manase, how many, how many returning players do you have for this next year?
Uh, so we're, so right now, we're just missing three seniors. So, yeah.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah, so I feel like next year, we're also going to have a great team as well. I'm, I'm a junior, so I'll be back next year as well.
Well, let's invite the whole, the whole team up, whoever else is here. Let's give these guys a round of applause. Please go around. Will you just go around and shake everybody's hand? Come all the way back to here.
Keep, no, you're good, you're right there. If you don't see us, we're fine.
Now, front row, just move this way so we're a little more balanced. Jesse, get tall over the top, there you go.
That's rude.
Here we go, looking good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, Dave, come on back.
One last thing, I'm sorry. I just got a text from the mayor, he's watching online, so that's cool. And then I just, I'd be really, sorry about that power line coming. I know that probably affected you a little bit.
I heard it though, I did.
Just want to give a huge shout out, where'd he go? To, uh, Pete Hanson.
Yeah, he's out there. He's right there.
Pete comes to everything. He comes and does ballgames for Spanish Fork High, Maple Mountain High. He's such a blessing to this community.
He is.
I will miss him greatly. So just from my perspective, Pete Hanson's a rock star for, for the kids in Spanish Fork.
I think he literally is a rock star. I think he does play in a band.
And a hand also.
Mayor Protem, before Dave walks out, uh, I, we kind of glossed over this, but he said he's retiring.
Uh huh.
Again.
Oh, again.
Cause I think you, you kind of retired from teaching.
I retired from the teaching part, but.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, I think it's certainly worth, uh, maybe some extra moment, maybe even a hand, an applause when we're done to, to. Coach Boyak is just a longtime resident, uh, a public servant and all the good that you've done, teaching in the classroom, the sports that you've, the sports that you have, have been a coach for, and then the continued influence that you've had, being the AD. I think you're one of those special ones, you know, kind of unique, that you're so willing and capable of doing and giving. And I think our community is better for, for having you, even though you're part of the gang. He knows what that means, right? But, uh, with that special gang, but Dave, you've been a great, you've been a rock star in our community too. And, and so many more know about you than, than even I do, but.
Thank you so much. By the way, for those who don't know, I was, uh, I was the Spanish Fork High School, uh, head track coach for twenty-nine years. And we won about six state titles down there. So my, I don't know, is there any Mapleton people still here? Maybe not. My blood really bleeds red and gray.
You can say that now, they're all in the hallway, they didn't hear it.
You're retired.
I've driven down the last two days and watched our building come down and it's like, ooh. But, uh, it's going to be great to see the new school come on and I'll be a lot of, I'll be to a lot of Spanish Fork High School stuff, which I look forward to, and Maple Mountain stuff. But I'm a, I'm a, I'm a diehard Spanish Forker. Stacy was, uh, my wife's, uh, uh, drill team.
Yes, I was just going to ask, what are you and Michelle going to do? Are you just going to be out on your porch sipping lemonade?
No, she still works. She still works and will for a long time, I think. She's got that workaholic blood in her. And I will be with Lifeson and Davis and the boys on the golf course and riding four wheels and playing with the gang.
So any dirt you can give, before you fully walk away, any dirt you can give on Dale and, and Stacy and Shane and Matt and anybody else?
We were perfect in high school.
This time is up, your three minutes are now up. But congratulations on your retirement.
You have amazing leaders here in this community and I'm, I'm just proud to still live in Spanish Fork. Uh, I live on the east end, but, uh, love Spanish Fork. It's the best community in America. I brag about all the things that people get to experience by living here. I'm really excited about the new, uh, rec center coming on. Can't wait for that. There's so much this community. My favorite week of the year is Fiesta Days and it's so well done. So just thank you for all you do and thanks for everything.
Thank you, Dave.
I don't think I've ever called him Dave before, that felt really weird. Really weird.
We are lucky to have people like Dave and Michelle Boyak in our community who have given so much of their, their selves to, to us. So it, it's good to see all of those youth too. So it's now time for public comments. If anyone here is from the public that would like to address us, that will not be in the public comments during that upcoming part. So anyone that would like to come up, you have three minutes. All right, seeing none, we'll go on to council comments. Um, how about we start with Kevin? Go down to Jesse and then wrap around to Landon and then Shane.
Super easy, Mayor Protem, I have nothing tonight to report on, so.
One thing I love about being Mayor Protem and since Mayor's watching, you get counsel done so fast, don't you all agree?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, Jesse, what do you have?
I was just going to say two things. The first is thank you to those who made the Memorial Day, um, celebration awesome. Again, the cemetery looked great, the founders field looked great, um, speakers, uh, just lots of different things that make, again, the community awesome. The second is I would, you know, echo what Angela said about the youth arts festival. If you haven't been to that before, come and check it out. Maple Mountain High School is a little bit different than Spanish Fork High School. If you've been to it down there before, uh, just because it's a little bit more consolidated. The kids, my kids are up there, um, and they're able to get to their classes, know what to do. It's, it's really nice. So, um, it'll go for the next couple of weeks, but go ahead and check that out. But that's all I have.
That's a big project.
Yes, it is.
We have great leaders, thanks.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. Uh, the memorial, I will just echo what, what Councilman Carden said, the Memorial Day event was spectacular. If you haven't attended it before, please do it next year. We had a good turnout and it just, it should grow and grow, I hope every year, I loved it. Uh, before I go into just a couple of few things, um, I'll turn the time over to our Chamber of Commerce President Kathleen Love.
Thank you so much, everyone. I appreciate the time. Um, just a couple of things to report. Uh, we have a ribbon cutting coming up on this Thursday, June sixth at noon. It's Shepherd's Carpet. They're, um, they're in their new location now, so we could be cutting a ribbon for them. That new address is two fifty west, five hundred south. Um, and then new networking is on June twentieth this month at the Hampton Inn. We're going to be hearing from three nonprofits, Log Off Play On, Live For Levi Foundation and All Paws Count Rescue. So we'll have short presentations from each one of them and that will be June twentieth at the Hampton Inn at noon. And that's what I've got for you guys. Big thanks, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen. All right, so the library board met this past week and had an amazing meeting. Just two things to kind of put on your radar, things that they're working towards that I think are pretty exciting. Uh, they're seeking grants for a digital transition station. Uh, so old DVDs and VHSs and things like that, you want to transfer to more modern technology. I thought that was pretty cool. They're working towards that and also a, a video game rental program. And these might be a ways out, but at least that's the direction that, that the library board's going. And, uh, it's fun to be a part of that. It'll be, it'll be really neat to see those implemented into the library and, you know, as new resources for all of our patrons here. Uh, also, we have some amazing pictures, uh, that I think Nick might be able to pull up, thanks to Pete Hanson. Uh, from over the weekend, Councilwoman Beck and myself, we were able to participate in the, um, the little, little pre and teen, Miss Spanish Fork pageants. And it was, uh, just a delight. We had such a good time on Friday and Saturday night. You can kind of see some of the, the things that we, we were able to be a part of. And amazing young women, so talented and they put in so much work, especially the, the leadership, uh, the directors who put on this, these productions. Uh, it was also really great to see Tabitha, Tabitha's Way as such a, a player in, in these programs. And to see these, these young ladies, uh, you know, collect so many, uh, items for Tabitha's Way. The, the numbers were absolutely off the charts, um, that they collected for that good cause. Uh, just that service piece that's, that's incorporated into the Miss, you know, the Spanish Fork program is second to none. Um, but we had a great time and, uh, again, if you haven't attended these events, I'd invite you to consider that next year. They're just, they're just so fun. They're, they're just part of what makes Spanish Fork so wonderful and, uh, that's, that's all I've got.
You can't wear a tie to that, man, you gotta dress down a little bit. It's a happy occasion.
For next year, noted, yeah.
Oh, listen to Shane.
You don't want to.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilman Took.
My turn?
Your turn.
I've got like fifteen, twenty minutes. Just kidding, you all know me. Um, I attended my, a couple of ki, uh, meetings this last week. Our solid waste district, we passed our twenty twenty-five budget. Very different budget than it was in twenty twenty-four. With that new location comes more operation expense. Um, they expect to be almost, collect almost four times the trash. Was it four times, Chris? I think four times as much as they did at the old place. So it's, if you haven't visited, go visit. Um, it's a much different experience than it once was, so come on down. Um, we had our personnel committee just yesterday, talked about our retirement policy. We'll hear more about that probably in two weeks. Um, and I just have to say that I, I've been on the city council now two years, almost, almost two years now, right? Two and a half, three?
Going on three.
Good heck, it's been forever. Um, it feels like thirty years. But we have, you heard Dave, they've won six state championships this year alone. Um, Spanish Fork's won a few. I have yet to be in town when one of the high schools won a state championship. I think there've been twelve of them and I've been out of town every time. So if you're a future AD, you might want to call me when it's state championship time and say, can you leave? That's your best chance.
Good thing you travel so often.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing and I, I've missed, I don't have a, I, I still have a bucket list to get on the fire truck.
You're not invited.
Well, I, I at least be there.
Yes, you could be there.
I could at least be there, but no.
Let him drive.
Let him drive, no, bad idea.
That's a good idea, Kevin. I liked Kevin before, but now I really like. That's it for me.
Is that all? Okay, awesome. Um, I just have one thing, it was one month ago that we announced the yard of the week. And so we have had four winners. I just wanted to give all four a shout out. The first one was Nate Kramer. The second one was Dallas and Haley Pruitt. Week three was Judy Ah. Thank you. And then this week, week four, is Jeff and Stephanie Duval. And we have had over a hundred and twenty-five nominations. So our committee, every weekend, are, are out driving around, looking at yards. It's really helpful to have pictures if you're nominating someone. So keep it up, it's going to be a really fun year. And we're just getting yards all over town and we really appreciate the beautiful, um, curb appeal on so many homes. And it's so fun to read why your neighbors, your kids, anonymous people are, are nominating you for yard of the week. So thanks for doing that.
Thing I love so much about these pictures is that each yard is so different. There isn't, it's not just one all grass or they're all grass or there, there are different ways of landscaping a yard that shows that we can do this in a variety of different ways, as long as it's not Shane's house.
Well, Jeff's all, his is turf, isn't even real grass.
Yeah, it, it's been fun. And there's so many, just so you know that even if your yard was nominated in week one, we keep you in the pool. So by week twenty, there, it's going to be a lot of houses to look at, but it's been a lot of fun. So keep it up, you can just hop on to our website, put in yard of the week in the search bar and nominate your neighbor or yourself.
How many spinels have you?
Uh, over a hundred and twenty-five.
I mean, I've done it a hundred times, so that makes sense.
Weird, I haven't seen your name.
It's anonymous.
Junk pile.
Okay, so moving on, um, consent items, can I get a motion to approve the consent items?
I move to approve this consent items.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Carden. Okay, motion by Councilman Cardon, second by Councilman Marshall. All in favor? Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Took?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Cardon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to do that all night or just in the RDA?
I think you vote too still.
Oh, yes. And Councilman Beck? Yes. Okay. I know mayor's watching, so he's gonna just be, ah.
He's on vacation.
I don't know.
He loves you guys.
He loves us. Alrighty. Jordan, you ready?
I'm ready.
We have three public hearings, so let's start with Jordan.
Is it four or five? I think you're...
Well, yeah, in different avenues. Okay, welcome, Jordan.
All right. So budget. We presented the tentative budget in the first council meeting in May. It's a hundred-page document. And in May, we covered some of the highlights of that, so I'm not gonna review that here. If somebody wants to, they can go watch a previous council meeting and they can go access that budget online. But we'll have the public hearing and then in two weeks, we'll formally adopt the budget.
May I maybe just make one note? In the budget, tentative budget that we presented on May 7th, that's still a living document, right? We're still working on things, finalizing things. Certainly, we're getting updates. One of the things I want to draw your attention to, and so if Nick will pull up page six from the printed budget document, we did spend, or we did talk about some rate adjustments, and by that I mean increases, with the tentative budget to sewer, drinking water, PI. And since the tentative budget, we've made some revisions, had some adjustments come in. Had two significant developments with the ability to long-term lease or in effect sell some water rights that we don't, we can't use to another city. And also restructure some payment requirements from the Central Utah Project. So we are, we will propose to you to reduce the increase. So reduce the rate increase in FY25 for drinking water from 1266 to 1165. And the drinking water usage rate from 118 to 116. The PI base rate from 1266 also to 1165, and the usage rate from the 92 cents to 87 cents. Consequently, there is some impact on the proposed Schedule II rates on the next page. And that would come down from 1666 for both water and PI to 1635. So I thought that was good news. And certainly, if we can deliver that to you a little bit earlier. As Chris has run the numbers and the CIP with those things that I mentioned, there's some great movement there. And the need for the increase, as it was outlined, is no longer necessary, so we can reduce that.
That is good news. Thanks for your work on that. All right. Thank you, Chris. All right, can I get a motion to go into public hearing for the 2025 fiscal year budget?
I move to go into public hearing for the 2025 fiscal year budget.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Euler, second by Marshall. All in favor? Say yes? Yes. Okay. Anyone for the budget? Okay, seeing none?
I move that we go out of public hearing.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Euler, motion to go out of public hearing. Councilman Cardon, second. All in favor? Say yes? Thank you. By the end of this night, I'll have this down. Okay. Item B, fiscal year 2025 salary budget hearing, Jordan.
In January, February, the state legislature passed a law requiring some additional public noticing, I guess, information on salaries of public entities. Nate, or Nick? I know it, wow.
Jake.
So this, we've put this in our budget for quite a while now. But this is the pay scale for all of the different positions, and it's five or six pages long for all the different benefited positions. In fiscal '25, we are projecting, budgeting for a 5% increase. What happens with those positions is HR goes and does comparisons to other cities to see how they're paying. And we benchmark off of those other cities' salaries. With inflation being a little bit higher, that 5% is a little higher maybe than normal. But we're projecting that that will kind of be the average increase to most of these positions.
5% includes, ranges themselves won't move 5% on average, but that is...
That would include.
Yeah, so we would anticipate the range is moving probably on average somewhere in the, I don't know if we have an idea yet. But let's say historically, probably two to three and a half percent. It's been all over the place the last two or three years, but maybe on average, two to three percent. And then the rest of that's for the ability to provide what we call a merit increase based on performance.
So employees are in a range, but then they can move up in the ranges they're performing at a higher level.
So is this what we already approved in the fall?
We, you would have approved this in the fall. We do our salary increases in the three years into the fiscal year. So we don't know what those numbers are gonna be in September.
So going forward, will we do this public hearing in the fall with that, or will we still do it?
The state law says that it needs to be done before the budget is formally adopted. So this is our effort to do, to be as compliant as we can, knowing that we don't have that.
Many, many communities, many cities do it in the spring, right? We're a little different in the winter.
We are. We're unique, and I think frankly, in a really great way. But most cities, and I think the state too, they implement their salary ranges July 1. And so they're doing their salary studies in the spring, like Councilman Euler said, starting whenever. And then for them to go effective July 1. So they're pulling data that's a year old, ten months old, and they're putting that together. We go right after that, once they're updated, and we just try to get right in front of them in line. So we're just, we, our system is designed to be a little bit off the schedule, but so that we are immediately slightly ahead, if we can be. And so the state law is written that this is really the budget, this is the time for us to have this kind of a hearing. For us, it really would be more impactful in October. We will do a public hearing in October for that as well. And so you can see, this salary schedule is effective last October. We would expect, you know, in that first meeting in October, kind of a thing where you would have the updated version of this, just like we did last year. So this is a little bit premature for how we do things, but probably not for how most everybody else does it. But we have to comply with how the law is written.
Any questions?
Any other questions? Okay, can I get a motion to go into public hearing?
I move that we go on to public hearing for the 2025 fiscal year salary budget.
Second.
Okay, motion by Euler, second by Took. All in favor? Say yes? Yes. Okay, public hearing for the salary budget. Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Cardon, second by Euler. All in favor? Say yes? Yes. Yes. All right, and our fiscal year 2025 dividend hearing. Jordan, welcome back.
All right. So state law governs particularly when you transfer funds from an enterprise fund, which function as a for-profit business, into the general fund. And we do that each year. And you can see those transfers here. Yeah, so we have to give notice that that transfer is occurring. We use the term dividend as, in addition to the transfer. If you think about Mapleton City, Mapleton City, they don't provide power. Their residents are served by Rocky Mountain Power. And the Rocky Mountain Power rates probably comparable to ours. But part of what that rate is going to is the investor owners of Rocky Mountain Power, right? Since we own Smash Fork Power, our residents are able to benefit from taking a portion of the power there and using it to keep taxes low. So there's over $2 million there in dividend transfers that are coming into the general fund. Where property taxes generates just over $5 million. So if we were to get that $2 million from property taxes instead of from the utility bill, necessitate a 40% increase in property taxes to make up for it. So you can think of it in those terms. Anything you would add to that, Chris or Seth?
We're actually lower than...
I thought you probably would add that part.
He has to. It's very correct.
Yeah. Okay. And then that bottom transfer, the $681,000, that's going for three more years, 25, 26, 27, to help pay off debt on the Justice Center. It was a 20-year bond issued in 2007. So in three more years, that one will no longer be required.
Perfect. I like the way we do it. So thanks for clarifying that. That's always a good reminder for our residents. All right, it's time to go into public hearing.
I move that we go into public hearing. Second.
Okay, public motion by Cardon, second by Took to go into public hearing for the fiscal year 2025 dividend hearing. All in favor? Yes. Okay, no one's here for that. Can I get a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by Cardon, second by Took. All in favor? Say yes? Yes. Okay.
They're probably all here for the RDA or LBA. That's what they're...
Yeah, they're waiting, huh? Okay, let's go on to number eight, new business. This is the UDOT reimbursement agreement for a temporary power line on 2700 North.
So maybe it's Chris.
Okay, can you go to Exhibit A? Great. We're really excited for UDOT constructing the interchange at 2700 North. 2700 North with this project will be renamed to Dry Creek Parkway, which is that little stream that runs along there. That way, you won't get confused driving on 2700 North and then 1600 South, Springville, and eventually 1600 North, Mapleton. So that whole road will just be Dry Creek Parkway, which will be great. This is the interchange or the road right by the Ford dealership up there, just north of the Highway 6 interchange. Anyway, in order to construct this interchange, they actually need to go over these two railroad tracks. And that'll be done in phases. But in order to build the embankments that will support the bridges that go over the railroad tracks, our power line there in the cyan color, the light blue color, will have to move temporarily south so that that can be built. And so that cost will be about $170,000, which the project will pay for. It's our power line, so we want to manage the construction, make sure that it's done right. And in a manner that it'll be ready to support the city during the hot summer months when our peak loads are. So this is an agreement to reimburse us that $170,000.
Thanks.
Chris, I got a question for you. So looking at your blue line that you've got on there, it looks like it jumps the street and goes north of the street into a substation. Is that on Springville's side? Do we share substations? How does that work?
So we're part of an organization, SUVPS, which is most of the cities in this area. And SUVPS owns several large substations that receive transmissive power at high voltage. And they transform that power down into a transmission grid that feeds all the cities. And so this is one of those big substations that multiple cities own. And then this pulls, this power line pulls power out of that transformer in that substation. And it actually goes to even smaller substations that the city owns that transforms it down to a lower voltage and then sends it throughout the city, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the UDOT reimbursement agreement for temporary power line on 2700 North.
Second.
Okay, motion by Cardon, second by Marshall. All in favor? Say yes? Nope. Roll call vote. Marshall?
Yes.
Took?
Yes.
Cardon?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the redevelopment agency meeting.
I move that we adjourn to RDA.
Second.
Okay, motion by Cardon, second by Marshall. All in favor? Say yes? Yes.
Roll call vote, looks like.
Oh, roll call? Okay, roll call vote. Cardon?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Took?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we need to approve the consent items?
I move to approve the RDA consent items.
Second.
Okay, motion by Marshall, second by Took. Is this also roll call? Okay, roll call. Took?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Cardon?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes. Now we are going into the RDA public hearing. Jordan's back.
I am back. RDA, RDA stands for redevelopment agency. So if somebody's looking for the RDA budget, it's actually part of the same Spanish Fork budget document. There's a, if you look at the table of contents, there's five or six pages dedicated to the redevelopment agency. Again, if you want to see what's in there, go to the budget or you can go watch the first council meeting in May. But we'll have the public hearing. And any questions you have, I'm happy to answer.
All right, no questions. Can I get a motion to go into public hearing for the RDA?
I move to go into the public hearing for RDA.
Just keep it going. You're doing well.
Second.
Okay, motion by Cardon, second by Euler. All in favor? Say yes? Yes. Yes. No one's running up, so we will go out of public hearing for the RDA. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by Cardon, second by Took. All in favor? Say yes? Yes. Yes. Okay, moving on to the local building authority.
I move that we adjourn to LBA. Second.
Okay, motion by Cardon, second by Took. All in favor? Say yes? Yes. LBA consent.
I move to approve the LBA consent items.
Way to go, Marshall.
Second.
Okay, motion by Marshall, second by Cardon. All in favor? Say yes? Roll call vote. Marshall?
Yes.
Took?
Yes.
Cardon?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Okay, our last public hearing for the night. So if you're here and if you really wanted to talk, you have one more chance. This is the LBA fiscal.
But you need to talk on LBA, right?
Yes, only on LBA. That's, yeah.
At this point.
Mayor Pro Tem runs a tight ship. She's getting things done. I like it. LBA stands for Local Building Authority. Again, if you want to see the LBA budget, it's part of the Smash Fork budget. There's a few pages in there. So the Local Building Authority is a separate legal entity. It owns this building and it owns the new SFCM building. And then it leases these buildings back to the city. The city makes those lease payments. That lease coincidentally matches the amount of the debt payment. So then the LBA receives the lease payment from the city and then makes the debt payment. Yeah.
Let me just add, this is probably one of my favorite things that we can do, because this is maybe the most understandable thing relative to our personal lives, right? Most of the bonds that we have are backed by something that you wouldn't relate. Like a sales tax bond is backed by a sales tax. A general obligation bond is backed by property tax. So if you build a building like this with, or let's take the Justice Center. We built that with a sales tax revenue bond. The collateral for that debt is actually sales tax. If we didn't make a payment on that, the bondholders could have legal rights to reach into our sales tax coffers, if you will, and require payment from our sales tax. And LBA allows us to carry debt just like you and I do on our house or our car. So for this building, the building is the security for the debt that is taken out. And if the city were to not make a payment or default, if you will, on that loan, the bondholders would have the ability to take the building. Very, very similar to how you and I would equate finances at our house. So it's a little different or confusing because it's a separate legal entity. That's requirements by law. But I really appreciate this tool and think it's a... That's requirements by law, but I really appreciate this tool and think it's a great way for us to, to do especially these structures, because it really equates to how we think debt is. Most people think the building is the collateral, so this, this plays the way we think it should.
Thanks for that explanation, Seth.
Any questions? Nope.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Move that go, I move that we go into public hearing for the L B A fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget.
Second.
Okay, motion by Euler, second by Carden. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now is your time. No one's running up here, so can I get a motion to go out of the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Carden, second by Euler. All in favor? Say yes?
Yes.
Maybe before we adjourn and go back to work session, a question for you as counsel. We've, we've, we had the tentative budget presentation a month ago. We've had meetings with you individually, sometimes two by two. We've had opportunities to discuss things, ask, answer, ask questions, answer questions. We anticipate, actually we're required by law, that you approve budget next council meeting, or by next council meeting. We could approve them today. I wouldn't, I don't want to, 'cause I think there's still some refining that will happen between now and June eighteenth anyways, which I like, and refining in a good way. But do you have any questions? Since we're talking about the budget, we've talked about all of the various budgets. Any, any lingering questions, or maybe questions that somebody's asked you, that since we've got this on the agenda, we're talking about the budget, that you wanna ask, or any discussions you wanna have related to, to anything budget-wise?
I think the biggest thing for the next meeting is just showing what the changes are that we've made, right?
From the temporary, tentative till then? Sure, yeah, we can do that.
Items.
Sure.
No, as far as questions asked to me, I, I can say that I've had no residents reach out to me with any questions concerning either.
I have not either.
Equal to the amount of residents that came forward and had public...
Yeah, about that.
Exact same number. Well, probably because there's, it seems like with the, with the budget, there's always a focus on, are you going to change my property tax rate, right? Typically raised.
We are not.
And this budget doesn't propose it. We don't even yet have our proposed property tax rate from the county, what it should be. But whatever that certified tax rate is, as determined by the county, that's what this budget proposes our property tax rate to be. And I don't know if we'll even have that by next, by next, in two weeks, maybe, but... You think so?
I'm sure we will.
Okay. You were looking yesterday or today, and the numbers were extremely preliminary, so it, but we'll, we'll have that. It, it will go down. We just don't know what that number is.
I think now's a good time for us as council to thank all of the staff for the hundreds of hours, literally, that you have put into this. This is a big budget, a lot of things that each department really had to give up. Everyone just doesn't get everything they want, kind of like in a household. You, you pick and choose, and, and thank you. It doesn't go unnoticed in reading through the budget. There's some really great things our community's doing, and, and our residents are obviously contributing to all of this, to make it a great place to live, and our, what our community just, a, a small-town feel, but, but growing at, at a good pace and, and doing really good things. So thanks to each one of you who have helped with the budget.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Mayor Potem, just in that our staff, you've all done a great job as far as balancing the budget and spending hours and hours, each director, to try and find locations and areas within your own budgets that you can, that you can improve on and maximize the, the tax dollar. So we appreciate that. One other note that I wanted to mention is that this year, we've made some large changes with our fire department with a huge, huge expense, and we've been able to do that without raising taxes. And so I think that's a huge accomplishment to the planning that takes place within our city.
It's a great point.
Cue the fire. Okay, um, we probably need a motion to go out of L B A hearing.
I move that we go out of L B A to back into city council.
Second.
Okay, motion by Carden, second by Took. All in favor? Say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we adjourn from city council, back into work session. Yeah?
Yes.
Well, actually...
Normally, we'd say adjourn because we're going to a closed session, and then we'd just adjourn the meeting after that. But this is a public work session, so I would say move to go into the tabled work session that we had earlier, and then we'll do a motion to adjourn after the...
My motion is as Vaughn said.
Does that make sense? I know it's silly.
And we'll, we'll just return back to the Explorer Room for that.
Okay, motion made by Carden?
Second.
Second by Euler. All in favor? Say yes?
Yes.
And this is a roll call? Or is that roll call after? Okay, roll call. Carden?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Took?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Beck? Yes. Thanks for coming. Have a good night.